I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson, do we have anything else to add to our agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
So moved.
Moved by Anna. Second?
A second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. We have two of our members, by the way, that are on business trips and they won't be with us, so we'll weather it through with the four of us. Scheduled presenters. Miguelis Tree Project. We have some people here that would like to speak to that.
Yes, I have Tim and Julie Miguelis joining us tonight along with Mike Wachholz from the DNR and Ms. Thompson, who is a part of our committee that has been discussing a tree project donation that the family would like to donate in honor of their son Ben. And we've been working on this since September, and so I thought I'd give a quick update with input from people on the committee before we vote tonight on a resolution to designate the area between the elementary and the high school as an official school forest as defined by the DNR. And so, I don't know if the family members want to speak first on this and some of their thoughts on how things are going.
I guess just a little bit of background is...
Julie, excuse me. Would you mind standing up, you're so we can...I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let's go over here.
That would be great. Thank you.
Just the background is that our, you know, both our kids went to school from kindergarten and graduated from here, and our son Ben went on to Vermillion Community College in Ely. And from there, went to Stevens Point, Wisconsin, and graduated with a degree in forestry. And so, we were looking for a project in the community when we lost Ben that tied our community with trees or the love of outdoors or something that embodied the spirit of Ben. And we read about Goodyear School, starting a school forest with the DNR, and thought, wow, that could be, that could be a good fit. And so, the ball started rolling, and here we are. We've got, it's, we'll hear the rest from the DNR guy, maybe that's enough for me. But that's how it started, and that's, that's why we're here. If we can marry the idea of kids that love to be outside with learning, or the kids that learn from a book with the outside, you know, all the better, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman is here also. She's on the committee. I forgot to mention her name as well. So, I don't know if any of the committee members want to talk before Mike starts discussing a little bit about the DNR involvement with that?
I would just like to say that I've been using our nature area, or what we hope to be the school forest, for my class, my sixth grade class, for, I don't know, years, like three, four, five, I don't even know. And it's a lovely space. We're very lucky to have that kind of an outdoor setting here. I mean, it might not seem real big, but we get good wildlife. There's a lot of trees there, and it's very exciting to bring it to the next level and make it even into a better environmental learning space, which it worked in, in nature centers and at environmental learning centers, and we have the potential to do some really cool things here, so. I'm excited.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks. So, Mike Wachholz, a field forester out of Lake City. And Karen Harrison is actually our, our school forest person for the state, so she's really, she would have been here tonight. She's really the one that would be, you know, answer what questions I can specific to the program. I have a couple handouts for you to better explain it, and I'll read through it here. But the school forest is, is a program to be, when you get students involved hands-on, hands-on experience out in the woods or just in natural areas, whether it's a half acre or 100 acres, the size doesn't really matter. It's just meant to be, be an opportunity for, let's see here, it's mainly the intent is to get people together. It's great, especially for Tim and Julie to be, this involvement to be able to honor Ben, but then also with the staff, looking forward to working with, you know, teachers and other volunteers too, as, as the opportunities there. Is able to work with Goodyear as well and their forest, and it's been fun to see that come involved. Really, it's, it's the combination with staff that are interested in using, that's what's really going to make it happen for the long run and keeping engaged in it. In fact, it's right here locally, you know, well, it's right walking distance to the school. It's going to be something that will get used. Other areas, I've worked in other parts of the state, and when the, involved with the school forest, those are away from the district, are away from the actual property, they get a little bit harder to use. So, this will be a perfect location and a good, well, a good opportunity to get students to be able to utilize it. So, this talking point, so you see the kind of, some of the, I asked Karen to put this together for me quick, just, it's some kind of things that, you know, things that I would have questions for too, if I was looking to sign on to a program. Are there strings attached, so to speak? Or, that's kind of what she addresses in the program requirements. At least five activities in a given year, so that would be anything from, you know, just a classroom going out and using it. It's not anything really, has to be formal, but that's what that middle section is there. You have the, many of you guys understand and have the commitment to be able to want to have the school forest and, and use it. There is, talks about timber sales, and there's not going to be any timber sales on this school forest, but that's kind of related to other larger forests up, up in the north traditionally. Let's see, yeah, and then the bottom part is just some of the advantages, advantages to the program itself. But, so, kind of a rundown, I'm like I said, I'm just, just the forester that usually works with staff and, and helping develop. I have, in a couple weeks here, we'll have a presentation from, and this is a, it's a lot of information here, but in front of it, there's a, a document, which is the forest stewardship plan that I wrote for this, the school forest, based on the goals that were expressed from the school, from the committee. And so, we'll, we'll go through that in a little more detail on, on another evening here, but, and this is something that has been in place, the forest stewardship program is available to, mainly it's meant to be for private landowners. So, in this case, the district is, is that, but that's why they're not, most private landowners, it's meant to be able to give you more tools, many information to be able to manage your woods and your natural areas on, based on what your goals are. And then, my side, or the, if it was more of a private, involved like wildlife specialist, it's tying, recognizing what you have out there for resource, and then working with you as a landowner on ways to approve that property. That is that. Any questions that, on the, on the application or on the, the resolution?
I have a picture of the area, if you're not familiar with it, which I think most of you are, if I can find my cursor on here. The area, this outlined area here, and there's a number of trails and maps, and the idea would be to clear out, have volunteers come in and help clear out buckthorn and kind of clean the trails up a little bit, and make it more easily accessible for students, almost groom the trails, and that'll come with some of the plans that we have coming from the DNR that they help provide for us. And then, set up open space classrooms for students using natural materials, either rocks or logs or something for them to sit on out there as well, as a, as an open classroom area. So, it's kind of the big picture yet. Obviously, there's still work for this committee to do in putting the plan together along with the DNR people, but that's kind of the, the big picture plan of this. And the, and the forest would be named the Cannon Falls Area School Forest. And then, hopefully within each section, there's different sections of trees and areas in different, I don't know.
Ecosystems or...
Ecosystems within the forest that we would identify and mark as well, that could be part of the forest, and I think that's where maybe some of the donations come in as well, in those areas, potentially.
We had also, Goodyear focused a lot of their forest on an apple orchard, that they planned to use the apples in their branches. And so, if, if they wanted, if you guys wanted some apple trees, we'll put in some apple trees. So, our plan is to plant trees that, in areas where we can develop another ecosystem or more diverse tree species, or enhance what's already there, and, and then, and also kind of get that prairie cleared up too, because Ben worked at Prairie Restorations for several summers.
And just along that lines too, just even, so, first, the plans are usually written on a 10-year span, but just the opportunity too for, you know, just, the opportunity for kids to be able to see more what, some of the fields and natural resources, what you, what you can do with it, and what a career path would be in it. There's a lot of opportunity to, just, on these nine acres, from prairie to woods and bottomlands, there's a good opportunity to see some different aspects to what you would be working with and doing. And then, very characteristic to what we have here in the southeast, in the Griffith area, that type, this type of woods is, there's some good characteristic woods in, within those nine acres.
I have a question. So, has there been an assessment of the nine acres and what's really there?
Yes.
So, when you do the cleanup, how much is going to be left?
Yeah. Yes, there is. So, for the most part, it's, you know, there's slope to most of it. There's, there's on the top and the bottom, there, it's more relatively level. But what it, it's mainly, there's, there's a lot of bur oak, and it's now with the buckthorn and other underbrush, it's kind of, it's pretty thick in there, but once, it is going to open up, it's kind of look, most of the, the west facing, the, the left side of that photo is going to look kind of like an oak savanna, especially once you just get the buckthorn out there. So, I mean, not much is gonna, it'll be park-like, or you know, that term, but really, there's going to be scattered big bur oak, and then there's, there's some cherry and some hackberry and some box elder and almond, things like that in there too, but first step is kind of getting that, that buckthorn out of there, so you can kind of see what's there. It'll look different, it's already there, but it's hard to see it. But on, as you get down the east side, on the right side of the woods, there, there's more cedar, red cedar mixed in there. That'll be kind of a balance of what the, what the community, what the district would like to do with that, because depending on landowner, some, it, it provides a benefit, but depending on landowner, some like it, some don't, because it's, you know, in the forest succession side, a cedar comes in, it continues to, or a lot of times with cedars there, it used to be prairie-like as well. So, whether you want to clear that cedar out, or you want to just keep it and let it go as it is, it's going to, you know, it's good deer habitat, it's good winter cover for them in particular, but there'll be different opportunities to go different ways depending on what the district wants to have. And then, you have, you have a pocket of cottonwood away on the east, and then the bottomlands is kind of a mix of, it's mainly grass, but there's some opportunity down there to, or improve the tree species that are there. Mainly, it's box elder, there's a little bit of black locust. So, I mean, it's a great site, but it's, it would be better suited to have longer-lived, nut or berry-producing trees there, they're going to be more benefit to the wildlife and also for just longer-lived and not as aggressive of growing trees, so.
And so, that would be part of the plan that you're putting together here?
Yes, so, what they plan, Russ, correct, yes. It makes, Russ, it's making a map of those woods and then explaining what the different parts of the woods or the natural area are. And then, that's where it's, you know, ongoing, whether insects or disease are just went through, come through, or you know, it's a kind of ever-open, it's a general management plan, it's meant to give you some guidance to specific things you want to do, such as, all right, want to do buckthorn control, want to do trail development. So, that's where, you know, that means we're here, and we use the DNR, so like if you get into trail stuff, our trail work, trail improvement, our, we have a division of trailers and waterways, and we'll put you into contact with, or we'll get some specific trail development specs to be able to better place and build those. You're welcome.
Any other questions? It's a great tribute to your son, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anything else you'd like to say?
That the Soder family also contributed in memory of, of a lifelong educator here in the district, so we'd like to put that in there too.
Thank you for that acknowledgement.
Yeah.
An emotional time. Moving forward, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may, may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during the input. If you have anything to say toward the school district, we'll allow up to three to five minutes, depending on the, the length of time and the number of people that we have to speak. So, does anyone wish to speak to the board at this time? I'd just as soon have you stand up, T.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tyler Twinglin. I'm a math teacher here in the district. This is my ninth year. I'm not comfortable being here, but there's some things that I wanted to share. I wrote them down to try to keep myself on task and to be conscious of the time, so. Good evening and thank you for allowing me some time on this platform. I'll be honest, I spent the last 32 days planning this address. At first, I wanted to rant about how upset I was, but that would have been immature and unprofessional. So, I wrote down my thoughts. I worked really hard for it to be thoughtful, respectful, and poignant. Color me biased, but I accomplished those goals. It's a great speech. The problem is, the speech I wrote was dishonest. Not in its material, which is all fact-based and well-crafted arguments, but dishonest with how I really felt. I don't want to speak to you on behalf of my department. I don't want to speak to you as a teacher or even as a community member. I just wanted to share my thoughts, and I hope they echo with the way that other people may feel. So, I re-wrote that speech, and this is that. I truly believe you all to be caring and good-natured people who want to do what's best for our school and community. Of all the people out there with opinions, you're the few courageous enough to step into your publicly elected positions and make those difficult decisions. The problem is, your actions are not in line with those ideals. If I had to narrow it down to one single piece of advice, it would be this: Please do your due diligence in being fully informed before you make a decision on behalf of the community that elected you. Currently, I think you're being under-informed, and it's not anyone's fault, and I don't think it's on purpose, but I don't think you have all the information you need to vote on reductions tonight. I'm not asking you to all do the work of a superintendent. I know how desperately you want to trust the guidance of administration, but you should demand to know everything. How many of you know the exact percent of the fund balance? What it would be with cuts or better yet what it would be without cuts? If you don't know those answers, you can't in good conscience be ready to vote on reductions. I know the recommendation came from the finance committee. I was at that forest of a meeting. Reductions were the only option presented. There was no choice and minimal discussion. The only reason the meeting lasted longer than the 45 minutes of presentation is because I personally posed the questions about having a legitimate long-term plan. I had to do the math myself to find out that if you make absolutely no reductions, the fund balance drops by a percent, and more likely, only by a quarter of a percent. And that's only due to the projected increase in expenditures that are inflation-adjusted. If you really want to make the best choice for our school, you should not vote on the reductions tonight. You should wait until the strategic plan is fully presented to you, and you understand how numerous potential revenue increases can work with necessary and mindful reductions to help restore our financial health. To touch on the revenue increases, I know referendums fail in major election years, but to chalk it up to crummy lock that in 2020 and not have a wealth-out-long-term plan for both increasing revenue in other areas and having multiple funds share the burden of reductions just seems short-sighted and rushed. I know it's rushed because that finance committee meeting only met 32 days ago. What rational approach to balancing books can be done in that amount of time? These proposed cuts are simply the fastest way to increase your arbitrary financial comfort number, but they do not have the best interests of our students and community in mind. With all due respect to my coworkers, and they're not going to like what I'm about to say, there are some things that I can concede, albeit unhappily. I can acknowledge that the elementary class numbers are smaller, and in a time of need, it's a logical place to look, regardless of whether you agree with the cut or not. I can even see the logic behind hiring, behind hiring a full-time administrator to do the job of our current teachers on special assignment, even if I don't like it. However, the cuts to the media specialists and a high school, middle school teacher are simply money grabs in an attempt to reach a number that was arbitrarily chosen to make you feel more comfortable financially. You have to ask yourself the following questions: Is our financial standing in such dire need of assistance that you're willing to improperly staff a media center that serves seven grades? Are you so blindly following the recommendations that you think a single department in this building has smaller class sizes than any other? The fact is, a middle school, high school teacher does not have to be cut. Administration was asked to get to a reduction number, and they did so begrudgingly. Not one person involved thinks ham-streaking any department or grade level, let alone a core subject, is a good idea, and you shouldn't either. The reasons you were given were pitiful. Class sizes are not smaller in the middle school, high school than they have been, and no department has smaller class sizes than another. Six assignments will alleviate some of the cut, but let's not pretend for a second that when you look to cut again next year, those won't be the first to go. You say you have to save programming so that students don't leave the district, but do you really think shoveling more and more onto administration and staff is going to keep those people around? The truth of the matter is this: You want to have pristine facilities and full programming, but what you're willing to sacrifice is your staff and the experience of your students. You say the community has to see you hurting before they're going to support you, but your current plan is to cut approximately $340,000, of which 86% comes from one source, staffing. Well, two weeks, two weeks ago, you earmarked $310,000 for facility preventative maintenance. Do you really believe the community is going to come running to help you when you're already mis-managing your current funding? A rainy day fund is great, but it's worth more to you than appropriately staffing our library and having enough math teachers? You need to stop and think very carefully about what information you have, what information you would like, and what you will be comfortable saying on behalf of the people that elected you. If your goal is to make accurate decisions, you need to slow down. If your goal is to be active for the sake of action, proceed as planned. We can agree to disagree on policy and philosophy, but I can promise you that the lifeblood of this school is the staff, and they are tired of going above and beyond for their students, will continually be entreated as auxiliary frivolous expenses. I urge you to cut anything you feel is absolutely unnecessary, but otherwise, ask for a more thorough look at the books. You may not need community input to approve reductions, but I can only imagine what you'll hear, trying to sell this as the plan that is best for our students and community.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. We'll close the public input. Consideration to approve...by the way, when anybody speaks to public input, it doesn't necessarily need a response, nor will it have a response, because we don't have the wherewithal right in front of us to make direct responses to that. I will tell you that this has been a, an extremely long and well-thought-out plan, but we will move forward. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
I can't get back here. The financial report, looking at cash flow, and the top is going to be our current checking account balances, mainly banking accounts of that community resource, you know, the burden for the HSA income to payroll. We're in a town with a school year where most of the items going in and out are for routine. The ideas payments from the state of Minnesota, on the left side for revenues, and on the right side, you'll see mainly the 15th and 30th of the month, the payroll going out along with the subsequent payroll taxes, PRA, TRA, and such. And the next page will show, which is not presented here, as you go through the full fiscal year of the cash flows, towards the end of May, as we start to get the first half of property taxes from the counties, and we have part of our district of Dakota County, so you'll see Goodyear Dakota County will come in our next financial report, you'll see revenue there from the county. The main thing to note here is the cash balance being positive throughout not only this report, but through the fiscal year, and not having to do any cash flow borrowing. The big difference as we talk, and I'm sure it will come up throughout the day, is cash balance is not the same as fund balance, but then the cash balance will be all the funds combined, the general fund, food service, community, debt, and so on. So, they're very, they're very little different. Sometimes we're flowing cash based on what we have in other funds, but there is a difference between cash balance and fund balance, which is, we want to recognize that. Any questions? I'll give you the best answer, what you have for, for the financial report.
We've, we refer to fund balance with two different types of accounts. We have an undesignedated, unassigned, and an assigned?
Yep. Well, within the general fund, or actually, within a fund, there are two main types of funds. Within the, one, there are several other varieties, but mainly would be unassigned, which the district is free to use as it sees fit. So, the, the general fund balance, we talk about the unassigned balance, coming into this year is about 2.78%. The total fund balance was a little over 6, close to 7%. Within the rest of those funds, the, other than the unassigned, would be, things would be like assigned for, say severance or capital expense, other long-term items that funds are designated for. So, for instance, we come into the district with $800,000 fund balance total for the general fund, $366,000 of that was reserved for severance and separation benefits that can't be touched or used to fund other things. The unassigned fund balance would represent about 3% of that $800,000. The part where the orders would recommend, having two months of cash on hand to support your fund, would be a fund balance of 16%. In order to have a 16% unassigned fund balance, we'd have to have a severe change in our fund balance to get to that. We have been operating on essentially a budget system that is balanced, but as expenditures naturally increase, whether it be inflation or contract settlements, or whatever it may be, that goes up, that number gets, as that expense gets bigger, the percentage of fund balance is decreasing. So, although we've balanced the budget, you'll see that fund balance percentage decreasing, which means if things were to happen where we weren't receiving funds from MDE, where we lost funding from, say, the federal government, we could lose that chance to have reserve money to make payroll, which would be the main expense we want to make sure we can cover. Most of our vendors would be, you know, pretty understanding about slow paying them, but payroll, it's got to be on every 15th and 30th, and in order to have that met, you know, 2.70% if we're going to go strictly on what's in the unassigned fund balance is pretty thin.
Any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown. Moved by Bill. Second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. The consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, we can remove it from the consent agenda for a separate action. Mr. Sampson, you always like to discuss the acceptance of gifts?
Yes. We'd like to recognize Jody Mize with the $50 donation toward Negative Lunch account balances for the district. Like to recognize the Southeast Chapter of Minnesota Society of Professional Engineers for a $200 donation. Must have been just a general donation there. And then, finally, the Cannon Falls Dance Parent Association with a donation of $1,344.33 for hotel rooms for the dancers during the state competition.
Okay, can see on the following page, our personnel listing, which is also part of that, and the approval of monthly bills. If you'd like to take just a moment to look over the minutes from the previous two meetings, that would be just fine. And when you're ready, please make a motion to approve the consent agenda unless you
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Katie. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Anna to approve the consent agenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Superintendent's report. Jeff?
Thank you. A couple of items here. As most of you saw in my report linked in, is a draft of our strategic priority action plan that we've been working on over the past few months since we finished our regular strategic priority plan. What I want you to do is please take time to look at it over the next week or so, until the next board meeting, and then, if you want to come with ideas to additions or changes to that... to that, that would be great, and we can certainly have a conversation during that meeting about that. And then if you want to move to approve it that night, that is fine, or we can wait until the second meeting in March to approve that action plan. The next item I'd like to bring to your attention also is last week was School Board Recognition Week, but obviously, we didn't have a meeting, and so at this point, I'd like to call attention to the printed off certificate that should be right in front of you, along with a plaque recognizing you guys for your service. Dwayne Pliscott and some of his students in his class were gracious enough to make these gifts for each of the board members, and so we want to thank Dwayne and his students for helping out with that project, and then also the certificate appreciation for each of you that is on the MSBA piece of paper there. So on behalf of the student, staff, and community, I'd like to say thank you for your service to education. Other than that, that is all I have.
Okay. Any comments, Director, towards the soup's report? Moving along to action items, we have no old business, we have plenty of new business. Number one is consideration to approve the resolution for the school forest designation.
And what this is, the process to officially engage with the DNR by designating that area of land that we talked about earlier as the Cannon Falls Area School Forest, and if you approve this tonight, I will be sending in an application to the DNR once I find it on here. I bet it's back here under the presentation. Here it is. There'll be a formal application to the DNR for the school forest, and as you can see the different areas of the application here, this would be called the Cannon Falls Area School Forest. We do have Dave Peterson listed as a site coordinator, just because it is part of the facilities in here, and we would have the required attachments to send along with that application. Members on the committee that have been meeting regularly with this are listed here. And then, obviously, have we contacted the DNR? Yes, we have. Been working hand-in-hand with them on this process. And then we'd be looking for knowledge of upkeep and planning for the grounds as part of their program that they would come up for with this, so. I do ask that you pass this resolution tonight, designating that area as the Cannon Falls Area School Forest and Outdoor Classroom area.
I had a question as far as if it does get passed, if there's a website as far as the plan, what we're doing actually with the site, additional committee members, help, that sort of thing?
We can certainly link something to our website. If we have the plan that's put together, we can link that on our website. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
Yeah. I mean, because would there be room for more committee members?
Oh, I'm sure there would.
Yes. Yes, we would be asking for more committee members and volunteers.
And then as far as Clarice Buckthorn, you're going to need help? Kind of promote some of this?
Yeah, I think we wanted to try to get something moving toward when Earth Day comes up in April, to start kind of a soft opening of that forest, and then have kind of a call for volunteers to help get that organized and started.
So we have a motion by Bill to approve the resolution for school forest designation. Have a second?
Second.
Anna, Anna on the second. Other discussion? Clerk?
All right. Resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 252 approves the establishment and maintenance of the Cannon Falls Area School Forest and Outdoor Classroom comprising part of the north half of the northwest quarter in Section 17, Township 112, Range 17, in Goodhue County, approximately 9.7 acres, described as starting at the northwest corner, then going east for 1,190 feet to the point of the beginning. From the point of beginning, going east 550 feet, then south 490 feet, then 60 degrees southwesterly for 265 feet, then 38 degrees southwesterly for 250 feet, then west for 255 feet, then north for 230 feet, then east for 80 feet, then north for 230 feet, then east for 45 feet, then north for 270 feet to the point of beginning. And supports enrollment of said school forest in the Minnesota DNR School Forest Program for educational purposes. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 4-0 vote. Thank you for coming, thank you for your explanation, and thank you for being a part of it. Sodders as well, thank you so much. Consideration to approve the 1920 spring assistant coaches. I believe we approved the bulk of them last time, and we still were waiting for some to be plugged in.
Yeah, we're still waiting for some in here.
So this would be the balance of our assistant coaches, right?
I believe so.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the balance of our spring coaches for 1920. Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Bill. Second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. We're not used to delays in motions and seconds, but we're short a couple. Consideration to approve the Minnesota MSBA Resolution for Local Board Control.
This resolution from MSBA, they are asking school districts to pass this as a resolution to bring forward to the state legislature to make sure that we are still having local board control of our school district, and then that each district is unique upon itself, and then sometimes a one-size-fits-all does not always work. And so, school districts are asking, or the School Board Association is asking districts to pass this resolution, and then all of these will be brought forward to the legislature to preserve local control in Minnesota.
Looking for a motion to approve the resolution on local board control? Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? It's a resolution, Katie?
Whereas locally-elected school boards are positioned best to represent their students, staff, parents, and community members, and address local needs and challenges. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools supports local decision-making authority and opposes legislation that restricts the ability for locally-elected school boards to respond to the needs of their district's students and communities. So, we're voting, Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a 4-0 vote. Moving along, consideration to approve the Family Medical Leave Act request from March 12th to March 29th.
This is for Josh Olson. I recommend approving it.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving along, what page is... Are we up to page 20 begins our process? Consideration to approve a non-renewal resolution.
The next three items are non-renewal resolutions for probationary teachers, and the first one on the list is Andreen Matrey.
Okay. Moved by Bill. I will second. I looked that up a long time ago, I can do that, I guess. So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Please read the resolution.
Whereas Andreen Matrey is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 that pursuant to the Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Andreen Matrey, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2019-2020 school year. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
And Katie, yes.
That passes by a 3-1 vote. Consideration to approve a non-renewal resolution.
This resolution is for Laura Martins.
Your motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, when you're ready.
Whereas Laura Martins is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Laura Martins, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2019-2020 school year. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Katie, yes.
That passes by a 3-1 vote. Consideration to approve a non-renewal resolution. Number three.
The third one is for Lauren Jensen.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill. I will second. Further discussion?
Whereas Lauren Jensen is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 that pursuant to the Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Lauren Jensen, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2019-2020 school year. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
And Katie, yes.
Katie, yes. That passes by a 3-1 vote. Resolution proposing unrequested leave of absence. Jeff?
The next three items on these teachers are proposals to put them on unrequested leave of absence. These would be finalized at the March 9th meeting, and the first one is Cindy DeRozier.
Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Katie? When you're ready.
Be it resolved by the school, or resolution proposing to place Cindy DeRozier on unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 as follows: That it is proposed that Cindy DeRozier, a teacher of said school district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of 2019-20 school year on June 30th, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A.40 subdivision 10, and teachers' master's agreement, Article, oh gosh, I need to know, 11, unrequested leave of absence and seniority, section 1, unrequested leave of absence. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
And Katie, yes.
That passes by a 3-1 vote. Consideration to approve the resolution proposing an unrequested leave of absence.
This unrequested leave of absence is for Stephen Strauss.
Okay, look for a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill. Second? I will second. Any other discussion? When you're ready, Katie?
Resolution proposing to place Stephen Strauss on unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 as follows: That it is proposed that Stephen Strauss, a teacher of said school district, will be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of 2019-20 school year, on June 30th, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A.40 subdivision 10, and teachers' master agreement, Article 11, unrequested leave of absence and seniority, section 1, unrequested leave of absence. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Katie, yes.
That passes by a 3-1 vote. Consideration to approve a resolution proposing an unrequested leave of absence.
The final one is for Adam Nelson.
Look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? Katie, when you're ready.
Resolution proposing to place Adam Nelson on unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 as follows: That it is proposed that Adam Nelson, a teacher of said school district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of 2019-20 school year, on June 30th, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A.40 subdivision 10, and teachers' master agreement, Article 11, unrequested leave of absence and seniority, section 1, unrequested leave of absence. Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
And Katie, yes.
That passes by a 3-1 vote. Up next, we've got informational meetings, March 9th. Jake is presenting, possibly Dylan is presenting? Yep. Resolution for placement on the unrequested leave, and you see the rest, world's best workforce, strategic priorities, and a consideration to prove a leave of absence request. So we are all ready to adjourn. Before we do, it's a... Understand what a distasteful process this is for us. When we get to that 3% undesigned or unassigned, whatever that terminology is, we're moving more toward statutory operating debt than we are to being a flush district. more toward statutory operating debt than we are to being a flush district. We've talked, we've tried to set a guideline of 8% minimum, and at 2-plus percent, almost 3%, we're well short of that. Like it or not, it's the position that we're in, and it's, until we get some different funding, until we get our state legislature to at least look at us, look at all small schools in the outlying areas and in the metro areas, we're going to be faced with this not only in Cannon Falls, but for the bulk of school districts in the state of Minnesota. So, we acknowledge your presence here as people who are supportive of our school district and supportive of our employees within the school district, but it's something that we're faced with, and we understand where the passions lie here, so. Having said that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Move by Anna. Second by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of dismissal, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are finished.